Oh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to tonight's November sixteenth Committee of the Whole. The time is seven thirty. We have four items to cover on this evening's agenda. But prior to starting, I just want to go over a couple of housekeeping items really quickly. As a reminder, the floor will be open for the audience for twenty minutes. They'll be able to address the City Council on matters that are on this evening's agenda after the City Council has had a moment to discuss the items with staff. We ask that persons wishing to address the City Council keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the City Council as a whole through the mayor, and profanity will not be used or tolerated in any form. The first item we have tonight, it seems like it's that time of year again, we have our ComEd annual update, and for this, I will defer to Mr. Joe Turnage. Joe, the floor is yours when you're ready.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you, guys, for having me out today. We always look forward to this opportunity to present before you. So what we're going to discuss today is our 2020 Annual Report. And I'm thinking that this is the button that I'm using, right?
Should be.
Yeah. You might have to turn it off. There you go. Thank you. All right. So in the report, what we're going to be talking about is the 2020 overall reliability that Rolling Meadows experienced. Then we're going to go into the 2021 system enhancements. We're also going to talk about the vegetation management, in addition to our ComEd communication channels, and our customer service report. Hard to see that, but that's okay, because I'm always prepared for the worst. So overall, you guys experienced a ninety-nine point ninety-nine percent reliability rate. We're proud of it. I hope you guys are as well. And we attribute that to all of the different things that we're doing in the community, such as our distribution automation devices, which we'll talk about in a little bit, in addition to all of the other system enhancements that we'll go into a little bit here as well. This next document here, this is the outage frequency. This document pretty much breaks down the different types of outages that you guys experienced, and it goes into the unknown ones, the equipment-related items, weather-related items, et cetera. This year, you guys were actually the lowest of going back to 2018. These were the lowest numbers ever, so again, we're very proud of that. This map here just pretty much outlines the different circuits that you guys have in the community. During our meeting, we typically talk about these. You guys currently have twenty-three circuits servicing Rolling Meadows. All of them are functioning very well, by the way. This next document here is the system enhancements. I'm going to speak from my device here. I can't see that. So overall, we had four distribution automation devices that we've added to the system in Rolling Meadows, and I don't know if you guys have ever been given details about what the distribution automation devices are, but I'll give you a little bit of insight. With these devices, ComEd can actually respond to outages before we start getting phone calls, the outages are there. In addition to that, these distribution automation devices can also inform us whenever there's problems, such as overheating and things like that, on our circuits. Whenever we get the readings from these devices, we go out and we address these items immediately so that they don't become full-blown outages later. Another thing that we've done this year is we have installed cable on four different circuits, four of the larger circuits in Rolling Meadows, and this document here at the bottom pretty much tells you how much we've installed as far as the cable program This sheet here talks about our inspections, our overhead inspections that we do. So a few minutes ago, I mentioned how some of the circuits may heat up at certain times. This creates the possibility of a full-blown outage. One of the other things that we do is we do what we call a thermography inspection, where we send someone out, and they physically go down the circuit, scanning it and looking for these hot spots on the circuit. Whenever we locate those, again, we act diligently to make sure that we go ahead and get those corrected before they become full-blown outages. This section here talks about our vegetation management, and in 2020, we trimmed two circuits. We have quite a few circuits also available to be trimmed this year in 2021. We have several planned, and we also have several that we've already completed, one of which is in Mr. Budmat's region. I know that probably about a year ago, you mentioned that your area was experiencing outages and things like that. I would ask, but now you should see a difference, because according to my records, we only had one outage last year.
You had two, and it was due to vegetation management right behind their house.
I'm sorry, one outage this year.
Two this year.
Two this year? Okay, so prior to now, if I'm not mistaken, I counted six, maybe, within a year's time?
This one was a good one.
Okay.
Like the third day, it was really nice.
Was it, it was a nice day that day? Okay, okay. Well, we still have more trimming that we're doing. One of the main things, when we went back and looked at the circuit, was the vegetation. So we did go ahead and trim around that area to try to minimize those outages that you guys were experiencing.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. This next section here will talk about our E-channels, and our E-channels is pretty much those residents that respond to Facebook postings and choose us as one of their Facebook friends, Twitter, et cetera. So of course, our numbers are going up, and we like that. One of the things that we say the reason for that is, is because customers can now go into the ComEd app and report outages. You can report outages through social media. When things are commented via social media, we make sure that we respond to them. We have a department that's dedicated to doing that, so those numbers are constantly increasing for the good. This section here talks about our customer service numbers. So our customer service average call handle time is up, and we're okay with that. Reason being is because we spend more time today assisting customers and resolving their issues the first time that they call us, rather than having them to repeat call us back and things like that. So we're good with the time going up, as long as we continue to keep that customer satisfaction going up as well. All right. And that's the end of my report. If you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them now.
Just following up on what you had said, is that you still have some of the vegetation management to do this year, being that we're going into December? Is that still scheduled to be done this year? Is that something that's going to roll to spring for the outstanding ones?
Any outstanding ones will roll into the spring.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Budmat?
So I do. I've been told that there was some report where I read that more than two or three people on a block were to get electric, if more than two or three people on a block were to get cars that, electric cars, that the infrastructure wouldn't be able to handle that additional load. Where are we at with increasing our load with our ability to power more houses with the ability to charge electric cars?
You know, I haven't heard that. Our system is pretty robust, and we're constantly looking at ways to improve it. Hopefully, I was speaking to the mayor early on, hopefully, next year, we'll be coming back to talk to you guys about all of the electrification and things like that as it progresses. So right now, we're still in the early stages, so I don't have much information in regards to that, but I have not heard that our system won't be able to account for the additional load that we're going to put on it.
I know that one of the other aldermen purchased an electric car and then found out that was going to have a great difficulty in actually getting the charger to work on, she had a floating ground system or floating delta or whatever it was, but she had a problem getting a charger to work in her particular neighborhood. So I'm curious, as you guys are troubleshooting that, so with all these other electric cars, the demands for electric cars increasing, that we'll be able to be ahead of the curve?
Yes, sir. Yes. We have, I mean, our new business group, they pretty much handle bringing in power. And, you know, in this particular case, I don't know if the issue is with the device or with the line coming in, but if that device is powered, then that tells me we're delivering at least twelve thousand volts to it. So we'd have to, you know, look at every one case by case to see whether it's the device or whether it's the actual circuit bringing the power to the device.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
Any other question?
Any other questions? Doesn't look like there's other questions. Thank you for the report.
Thank you, guys.
I look forward to having you back in the future about the network's evolution.
Yes. I'm excited about that, so looking forward to coming back with that, so thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So this ends the ComEd Annual Report, and we'll move on to the Geographic Information System, the GIS report, and for this, I'll defer to Director Horn when you're ready for the introductions, and then we can hand it over to your colleague here who will be going in detail.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This will be brief. The city is one of forty-one communities that make up the GIS consortium. We currently utilize the expertise of two different GIS specialists. Three days a week, we have a gentleman named Kiko Mari and Seth Tribby, who serve as a GIS analyst for the city. They bring knowledge and experiences in areas like municipal government, urban planning and policies, global and spatial geography, and of course, geographic information systems to all of our city departments. With us this evening is the city's client manager, Ralph Nickisher. Ralph joined MGP in 2018 as a client account manager, where he manages about half of the forty-one communities in the consortium. Prior to working with MGP, Ralph worked as an assistant urban forester for the city of Monterey, California, and worked for the village of Hinsdale as a public service superintendent and horticulturist. Ralph began working in local government in 2007, and as a result, the communities that are served by him benefit greatly because of his prior government experience. We've asked Ralph to come here tonight to provide the council, especially the new council members, with a real high-level overview of our GIS and how we utilize it, and we will both be available for questions afterwards. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for that introduction, Rob. That's really great. Mayor and Council, thank you so much for having me tonight. I think this is the first time we've been in front of you in at least quite some time, so I've been really looking forward to this opportunity here for many weeks now, since Rob and I first started talking about this. So first and foremost, I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things that Rob didn't mention. You know, I do have a passion for local government. As Rob mentioned, I've been in and around local government now for over a decade, almost fifteen years, which was crazy to believe as I was preparing for this presentation. But what I did recognize in my time in local government is really a need for high-quality data to help department leadership, to help city council members use that data to inform your decisions, so that's why I was really excited to join the MGP team and take on that opportunity now to help out, you know, over forty-one cities and villages throughout the Chicagoland area. So like Rob mentioned, I'm going to give a high-level overview of the GIS program, how we're doing that across the membership of the GIS consortium, but more specifically, how we're applying that here in the city, and I'd be happy to entertain any of your questions after the presentation here. So just a little bit of an overview on the GIS consortium. As I mentioned, we're up to forty-one members when Rolling Meadows joined the consortium back in 2014. The consortium was almost half the size, so we continue to add members and members each and every year. We've added a member even through the pandemic, which is exciting to our existing members because we're able to distribute the costs of this technology amongst the membership, and I'll go into that in a little bit more detail later on. It's a really great joint purchasing opportunity here in local government in the Chicagoland area. So I just want to make a clear distinction here at who I am, who I work for, and what the GIS consortium is. So the GIS consortium is its own public entity. Director Horn is a member of the board. The GIS consortium has its own board of each member community, so it's its own separate public entity. They vote on decisions on behalf of its membership to help direct my company, MGP Municipal GIS Partners, in where we should focus our efforts in each of our client programs. So it's a nice public-private partnership here to ensure that we're delivering high-quality programs to all the communities that we serve. So tonight, I did want to go over three main elements to each of the programs that we provide to our communities. First and foremost, I just want to highlight the program staffing model that you get through this membership in the consortium. Then I want to talk a little bit more about the shared technology and the shared cost that are attributed to that, you know, through your membership in the GIS consortium. And then lastly, the solutions that city staff are taking advantage of, you know, helping inform decisions, bringing data to the table whenever big decisions are being made. So on the program staffing model side of things, I just want to highlight here that there's a whole team that is associated with the management of your program here. So while I'm your client account manager, and Director Horn mentioned, you have a couple of onsite analysts that work in the city three days a week. We also have a team that works in our main office in displays that keeps the solutions running, and I'll kind of overview that here in just a moment. So there's an entire team that is focused on your GIS program. With the program staffing model, we're focused on ensuring that your critical data stays up-to-date and current, and I'll highlight what those different data sets are and what that relationship to GIS is. And then lastly, as through your staffing that you get as part of the consortium, we are delivering on different projects, things related to the city's strategic initiatives. So I'll highlight a couple of those examples as well. So first and foremost, here's the team that is managing your GIS program. I think it's important to highlight that, you know, it's not just me, it's not just your analysts here, but there's an entire team that is focused on Rolling Meadows program. You know, my position is split amongst the membership of the consortium, as is the GIS manager, Maria Musito, and as is the shared analyst team. But this does create an efficiency. When communities try to stand up a program like this on their own, you know, they have to hire multiple people, whereas those positions are split amongst our membership, which does create an efficiency and a cost savings there. And it also enables us to bring on different levels of expertise to build different applications and develop them, and also focus on the management of the program overall. This also helps with attrition. A lot of programs that have one person, you know, running the GIS program are susceptible to attrition when that person leaves, outwashes all the institutional knowledge, and that program does become in jeopardy unless there's really good documentation on that. By having this team approach to your GIS program, it enables us to transition whenever we do have attrition on the MGP team, you know, we can have assurance that the program will continue on, and we do everything in a standard way to ensure that will happen. So when I talked earlier about the critical data sets that we manage for local government, and MGP only has local government clients, we are the service provider to the GIS consortium, so that's all we're working with. So we're very familiar with local government. These are the five most critical data sets that are relevant to local government that GIS is managing. First and foremost, address, and you may think, oh, it's just an address, you know, no big deal, but it is a really critical, important piece of data to have and have accurate. It powers almost every system that city staff works with, that your residents are working with as well. So having high-quality addresses is really important for things like ensuring that you're collecting all revenues. In a community that I previously worked in, we didn't always have great address quality, which meant we weren't sure if we were collecting all revenues from things like utility billing and such. So address is such a critical component. It's also a critical component to bring data from different systems together, and we do that in a solution that we offer to the public and both city staff called Community Portal. Also utilities. Utilities is a critical piece of data that we manage for local government. So Director Horn and his staff, amongst, you know, a lot of other city staff, are looking at the infrastructure. They're using that data to help inform decisions through capital planning and other aspects for maintenance on different systems. The corporate limit is a critical piece of data as well. You know, we had a representative from ComEd here earlier. If we didn't have an accurate corporate limit, you know, that could limit the city's ability to collect on things like enterprise taxes from those different utility companies as well. We do a check with that entity and other entities from time to time to ensure that all properties within Rolling Meadows' boundary is getting the appropriate tax collected. So it's important to have that high-quality data set there. Zoning and public safety are also critical data sets that we're managing. Public safety is important. We're managing a lot of boundaries, police, firebeats, and we work with your consolidated dispatch center to ensure that they have the latest and greatest data as well, to ensure that services are being served up to the appropriate place. So it's really important to have those data sets accurate. The state is moving to a new system that is GIS-based, so Northwest Central Dispatch is submitting the data, but we're working with them to make sure that they have the latest and greatest data. So we're focused on getting that critical data, keeping that up-to-date, so there's a good portion of your analyst's time each year that is focusing on just maintaining that data. It's really important for them to keep that up-to-date. But in addition to that, where we have time left over, we focus the program to ensure that the GIS is working on projects that support your strategic goals and initiatives. So each year, me and my team, we take a look at the budget where we find your strategic goals that are laid out for the next year, and we ensure that we're prioritizing the projects that have come up through our discovery with city staff, that they're aligning with these different priorities that you have. I have some examples here on this slide here where, you know, we're working with your staff to, on the ERP implementation, there is a GIS component to that with addresses. So we've worked through the different iterations of the Tyler product that you're going through right now. Economic development, we have a public-facing story map that we update with available properties so the city can go out there and promote the sites that you have available to potential developers. We also are working across the entire city with each department, so we do things with police and fire. The example at the bottom there is we did an incident analysis, working with the fire department there, to ensure, you know, if they needed to make any changes with any resources, if they needed to do staffing any different. So we provide them the data to help them make decisions and make recommendations overall. The next thing that I wanted to highlight is the shared technology. There's a couple of components to this. So again, we're sharing technology, we're talking hardware, so servers, licensing, across the entire consortium, across its membership. We also have a secure data structure because we are focused on local government. We've set up the data structure to represent local government, so again, it does protect it from attrition because it's easily locatable. If we have one of our team members take a look at the data, they would know what they were looking at. It's not somebody's own formulation and some proprietary thing. And then we share a collective expertise across the consortium, so because we work with over forty-one cities and villages, we turn to that pool of knowledge to help us inform our decisions as well and what we're going to work on next. I know it's really challenging to see here. The main highlight that I'm trying to represent on this slide is when a community tries to set, stand up their own GIS program, purchasing the software licenses, purchasing the hardware, the servers, purchasing the applications for city staff and the public to see the data, it costs a lot of money. So the power of the consortium is distributing that cost amongst its members. We ran an analysis and came across a number of forty-three thousand dollars if somebody wanted to go on a loan to stand up this. A Rolling Meadows contribution to the GIS consortium each year for that shared technology is only three thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars. That's next year's cost. So by distributing it amongst the different members, it's such a benefit to make this technology available to small and medium-sized local governments. Lastly, I just want to close out with the solutions that are offered. A lot of these solutions are for city staff. There's a couple of public-facing solutions as well to help out with things like transparency. So again, we're sharing these solutions amongst the members, and we'll actually share ideas across the members as well. A good example of this, one of Director Horn's staff had an idea for an application to do manhole inspections to help them identify where... manhole inspections to help them identify where maintenance needed to occur in different manholes, and some reporting that he has to do with it as well. We built a standard application over the series of the next few months, and now we've distributed that to the rest of the membership as well. So there's a lot of sharing and collaborating going on across the consortium, and Rolling Meadows is benefiting from those ideas from other communities as well. We also are working on local government standards, and again, there's efficiencies and cost savings with the solutions as well. This next slide here is just highlighting the solutions that are available to city staff, some of which are available to the public as well through your membership in the GIS consortium. So there's a lot out there. Some are supporting specific business processes. Some of the solutions are supporting, you know, deeper analysis by viewing the data. I did want to highlight three of the solutions here. These are the top three used solutions in the city right now, and quite honestly, across the consortium. Overall, I would say it's really exciting to see the city taking advantage of these solutions. We do put measurements based on other communities, and we kind of normalize that based on size of a community. And Rolling Meadows in these top three solutions are well above the benchmark at where we'd expect usage to be. So that first solution is MyGIS. That's the city's internal mapping application. It houses all of your GIS data, and it's visualized on a map, so city staff can go in there, turn on different data layers, and there's a bunch of GIS tools to do different types of analysis, to help provide better services to residents, to help come to conclusions by viewing the data, taking a look at utilities, and getting some insights out of that for things like capital planning. Community Portal, now this is, I apologize, let me switch slides here. Community Portal is a solution that does have a public-facing component to this. Rolling Meadows is actually the number-two user as far as searches goes across the membership, which is really exciting to see. You have this prominently displayed on the city's website. So this is really acting like a 24-hour-a-day city hall, so there's a lot of information that when a resident types in their address is returned to them, so they can find out things about, you know, when their trash collection is going to occur. They can learn about the zoning and what that entails to their property. So there's a lot of really good insights that the public can find out when they type in their address. And I'm proud to say that, you know, Rolling Meadows is a very strong user of that, and that's mostly because of the public component to it. Community Portal also has the ability to bring data from different systems together, like county data or, you know, different systems within the city as well. So there's, you know, in other communities, we've displayed permit status out of a permitting system. It's just a really simple and easy interface that a resident can go in, type in their address, and learn about, you know, the status of a permit. So there's a really exciting integration component with Community Portal that I see as we move through the different Tyler implementations, as a big opportunity for the city to surface information up to not only just internal staff, but the public as well. And then the last solution I wanted to highlight is asset management. Asset management is a collection of applications around utilities, and what this application allows staff to do is to edit the GIS data, so they can go in there and edit data, they can update different attribution on the different utility systems, they can even draw on their own utilities if need be. And then on the tail end of that, there's a bunch of dashboards that display different insights out of that data as well to support different processes. So for example, there's a hydrant flushing application, and with asset management, staff can go in, or if a contractor's doing the work, they can do this as well. They can go in and they can indicate when a hydrant has been flushed. That information that can be displayed on a dashboard to help the Director Horn's management team understand where the staff is at in the progress of doing this annual maintenance task that they're doing, understand the progress of it, understand where they need to go, and that information can even be relayed out to the public as well. So again, Rolling Meadows is well above the benchmark that we set based on the data we've collected from the different communities across the consortium. So that's really exciting to see your staff getting, and the public getting, a lot of use out of these different solutions. So that concludes what I had here to present. I'd like to go ahead and open it up to the council for any questions.
I appreciate that, thank you. Any questions, comments, or concern? I have, Alderman O'Brien, go ahead, and I'll close it up.
From your experience too, I'm just like, from a high level, it's going to sound like a generic, how does it work? I'm going to, like, we just had a new subdivision built within the last two years. So when that happens, and I'll defer to Director Horn, like, so granted, we're landlocked, so that's probably not going to happen much in the future, but how does that work? We break land, it's been zoned, new streets go in, new fire hydrants. That's the stuff you guys upload every year from, like, the U.S. Postal Service? Like, what's your source data when a new development goes in?
Well, there's a couple of different sources, especially on something as major as a new development. The city is the authority on address, so the addresses are assigned by the city. We've actually established what we call an address stakeholder team in the city, so when a new development does come up, we get a group of city staff together, including our GIS personnel that work in the city, to talk through what these changes are going to be, so we're proactive in getting that information into the GIS. And we also have policies in place to notify all of the entities that would be impacted by that. So address, you know, I mentioned that earlier, that's a critical data set, so we want to make sure we have structure around that, the human systems around that, to keep that data up-to-date. Now, if we're talking like the mapping component and seeing that visually on a map, we can go about getting that data a couple of different ways. The county will eventually get data updated. They do flights to capture aerial imagery, and they do flights to capture what we call planometric data, which are like the building polygons that you see in the base map. You can do different analysis with that. So we typically defer to wait until the county has that information up-to-date because we can integrate it into the solutions at no cost. And then there are options to do flights with third-party companies. The consortium has an agreement with a company called Ayers Associates. Now, that does come at a cost if you wanted to do that more frequently.
No, thanks, because I'm sure it relays to Chief Nowacki and Moxley and Police and Fire and the new addresses, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. I see Director Horn has some information to add to this.
Just one thing, specific to that subdivision. So anytime somebody does a new development where they do install utilities that the city will take ownership of, or even private for that matter if it's extensive enough, we require the developer prior to finalizing, either returning their letters of credit or whatever we might be holding, we require them to do full record drawings and provide that in a format that integrates with the GIS system. And so we, that information is then given to GIS, the analyst, they upload it into the system, our staff goes out, confirms that the data that got uploaded matches what exists on-site, and then everybody gives it a thumbs up and it's ready to go live.
Cool. Thank you, that's helpful.
Thanks. Quick question for you.
Yeah.
Just to go back to the data and information sharing component. As a GIS consortium member, the city of Rolling Meadows, how does it work for access to that data and information if the city were to go about securing a vendor for digital twin technology? And for those who don't know, digital twin technology is a virtual representation of the city. For example, everything below ground to above ground in all the infrastructure. We, as a municipality, could utilize that virtual environment to explore development opportunities or what have you, or gauge and measure impact on roads, bridges, and infrastructure. How does it work with the consortium? We, as a member, do we have ability to share that data and information with the vendor, or does the vendor have to become a GIS consortium member as well to have access to that?
Yeah, so the question that you're asking is really about the data and the ability to share that out. The city owns all of this data, so you, as the city, can decide what you do with that data. You can share it out. You know, we have the data stored in the cloud infrastructure that the GIS consortium purchases, but we also have a copy of that locally as well and in different backups. So the data is the city's, you know, the time that you're paying our staff to build out these different data sets and keep them maintained. The city can choose to use that data, you know, in any way that it wants. We certainly would like to have a conversation and protect the interests of the cities with those vendors, and we have a data-sharing process to where we'd have to get sign-off from the city to share that out.
Thank you. Director Horn?
Yeah, I would, I'll just add on, and Ralph did allude to it, we do have a data-sharing agreement that is very specific, that was developed by the teams early on, approved by all the city attorneys, to make sure that if that information was given to somebody that they have to use it under very strict conditions. So it's like a four-page agreement that they have to sign off on. So we do those very fairly regularly, usually when we do a large capital program.
Sure. And the end result is the product is the city is at the end of a digital twin anyway, which is out of curiosity how that information-sharing model flowed. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely. Another example of that where we've done data sharing, and we've done two-way data sharing as well with other entities like MWRD, so we entered into a data-sharing agreement with all county communities across the consortium. With MWRD, we set up a framework to mutually exchange data if a community wanted to opt into that, so then the city can then see MWRD's data and vice versa to help with collaboration and planning, you know, ultimately. Infrastructure connects and the water has to go somewhere, so it's important that, you know, we're looking for those types of opportunities as well.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Alderman Bunnets?
So with a multi-unit apartment building, do you look at each unit as a separate GIS address, or do you look at the whole apartment building as a GIS address?
Really, the way our model is built out, we collect both, because it supports a couple of different business processes across departments. So yeah, we do retain individual unit addresses as well as what we would call a base address for that unit.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Nickerson, I appreciate this.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me tonight.
Of course. Well, this will bring us on to Chief Moxley here with our Insurance Service Office and Public Protection Classification, ISO and PPC.
Good evening.
Another one next to you, maybe.
How's the chase working?
Uh-oh. We might have to ask you to go to the podium.
All right, all right. Here we go.
No. I don't care. That's bad. I'll be nervous.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Very, very pleased to announce that we did this year earn a Class II rating with the ISO. For the past 31 years I've been here, we've been a three, sometimes bounced back to a four. So this is a very, yeah, very proud moment for me and the department. This ISO review we had at this past year, it actually coincided with the OSHA visit, which actually probably helped us out. We were, that's done also, by the way. I know you had letters on that, that is finished. No monetary citations, anything, we're all good, in compliance, which is a wonderful thing. We had records examination, site visits, observation. Some of the things that went into this, the new station locations, just the locations, we had about an 82% coverage rate prior to the stations moving. We're now at about 98%, which is, did help us a lot. Our response plans within the RPM, Palatine-Palatine-Rural, Rolling Meadows standardization, the ladder truck purchase, putting the ladder truck in operation, we did gain some points on that. Better documentation aided, also in the rating classification. I do want to thank the, I don't know if anybody had to look at this report, we're still dissecting the data. I want to thank, from Public Works, Mark Kilarzki and his team from Public Works Water Department. They were, they came in, the three of them, I don't know all the people that were in there, I'll send you a note tomorrow, Rob, but they came in and they did a heck of a job, probably the highest score we've ever had. I'm sure there's been water improvements, but whatever documentation they have, probably GIS helped really raised our classification there. Water supplies, 40 points. Emergency communications, again, John Farrar, Northwest Central Dispatch, outstanding job. And then the fire department is 50 points. And I have to thank Lieutenant, or Lieutenant, I already, I'm de-moting you, Pete. Deputy Chief Pete Sutter and Lisa Norden did a lot with this. This is probably two to three months we worked, a lot of effort was put into this. One of the best things about this, the score is a measurement of the community's overall ability to reduce property losses due to fires. So what it may do is it will, depending on the insurance company, the metrics that they use, it should, or I should say may, lower your insurance premiums, business premiums, homeowner premiums. I threw a scenario out to the community I live in with the department and asked my insurance agent today, and it was a very noticeable reduction if my department would happen to get the upgrade, so we're going to be talking to them pretty soon. We are also going to use this as a kind of a blueprint and a template to focus on areas of improvement for the department. With that being said, we did go over this report. In the middle of this, the person who came out and was our rep resigned in the middle of it. We were assigned a different rep. All the data was done, I think there were some, there's some miscommunication in there, so I am going to challenge some of the, some of the things, the ladder aerial device review. Again, if anybody looked at this, I want a clarification on the scoring, because we have probably one of the tallest-reaching ladder trucks, MAN 24-7, and we didn't get enough, high enough of a score, I don't think. The department analysis, we did a very, very thorough analysis of the department. I think from the complexity of the RPM FOG, the Field Operating Guidelines, and the auto weight agreements we have now, I don't think he understood exactly what we're doing versus the person who resigned, so I'm going to talk to him about that. I've got a bunch of other things on here. One of the things that they did, kind of low scores we had, were classes for officers of the department. We do a lot of training, which is another question I have for them, because our hours actually exceed what they wanted. But while this was going on, Deputy Chief Sutter was working on a new officer training program, which he just put into play October of this year. So we have an officer, acting officer up to lieutenant, battalion chief, and all the way up the ranks. He put this together, so I guarantee you on the next review, we're going to have a much better score with that one. Another thing I did notice is that the live-fire training that they say we were lacking, that has to do with, again, COVID 2020, we didn't have the live-fire training we normally would have, and I kind of questioned the timing of the ISO review itself. And our training site in Palatine has since been decommissioned due to structural problems, so we're working on alternatives to that for having a training site. Yeah, with that, I will open it for questions, but I will say that we are nationwide, we're in the top 5% of all fire departments, and in Illinois, we're in about the top 8%. There are only 27 Class I departments in Illinois, 119 Class II, 120 with us. We are going to work on this. Our goal here is hopefully within the next review, I don't think it'll happen now with our review, but within, these do every five years, and I'm pretty confident in saying that we're going to become an ISO I within five years, so. That is about all I have right now. Again, I'm very proud of everybody, and it was a good ride, so. Any questions on anything? I know it's a great read.
Just to congratulate you, Chief. That's no small order, so you and your team should be proud. In a former life, I used to help organizations with acquiring and maintaining their ISO 9001 certification, and it is a complex process, it's grueling, but it's rewarding.
Yeah, it definitely is.
It validates all that the guys do in their processes and standards.
Yes.
Good for you guys.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? You're free to go, thanks. Well, the last item we have is landscaping services, request for proposal, also RFPs in the bidding process, and for this, we'll swing back to you, Director Horn.
Thank you, Mayor. I too led the charge on our ISO program in the previous community, and "a two" kind of floored me. I almost fell on my chair because that is pretty great, so I will extend my kudos to the fire department as well. Thank you for taking time to talk about this issue with me tonight. You know, this is not something our department generally is in favor of. We're believers in getting the best price and putting things out to bid. However, we have run into a kind of a cyclical problem with certain contracts. It's okay that I have this down, right? Okay. Just a real quick, brief overview. Just a real quick brief overview. As far as the bid process, for those of you who may or may not know, city advertises for bids publicly on our city website and in a newspaper. We accept those bids, it usually is a 10-day time period. I think the city code requires seven, but we do 10 just to, that's the I dot requirement. We do that, we hold a public bid opening, usually in this room. At that time, we announce an apparent low bidder. We say apparent because we have to check their math, we have to check their references, and make sure that they have, based on the information we've requested as part of the bid, they have what is necessary to perform the tasks that we've asked them to perform. We take the bids back, we run all the numbers through Excel spreadsheet, make sure there are no mathematical errors. We check their references. Typically, you have to give three to five references based on the contract, landscaping contracts, three. And at that time, generally, the rule of thumb is if we can't find a problem, whatever the lowest bidder is, we're going to come and present that to you. And what that's resulted in, well, let me, let me step back. So that's the bid process. The RFP process is kind of like a mashup of the RFQ process, which is our qualification-based selection process that we use for design professionals and the bid process. So we still advertise, we still prepare bid documents for contractors to look at. We still ask for references, we give them 10 days. The difference is we get the proposals in, we don't publicly open them and read them. What we do is we assess the proposals that we receive. We determine based on what we receive, who we feel is most appropriately in the ballpark of what, that the price matches the expectation. A lot of times people, and again, when it comes to landscaping, everybody with three lawn mowers thinks they're a landscaper. And there's no real I dot requirements or prequalifications that we use in the bigger projects to keep the mom and pop shops, the guys that take six months to do a two-month project, out of the bidding process. So we have to take whatever we get. So, you know, we read those through, we look at the pricing we received. The one big thing, and if I misspeak, the city attorney will correct me, the one great thing we have the opportunity to do is have an interview or a conversation with the contractor. And if we feel like their understanding of a item was off, we obviously wouldn't encourage them to increase their price, but we can, they can decrease their price in that process. Once that's done and we feel like we have the lowest, most qualified contractor, then we still bring that back to City Council and ask for their approval. I will tell you, we currently do that with 1,000 projects a year. Anytime you guys approve any HVAC contract, Alderman Budmans knows this for sure, we don't have the expertise and staff to write a bid specification for something like that. So unless it's something we can purchase through that we're going to install ourself, or the labor is included as part of the Sourcewell bidding service, we just seek proposals from area contractors. And our new policy is we try to, anything over 20,000, we go for five. We don't always get five, but we ask for five. That at least kind of encourages multiple proposals. So that's just a snapshot as to the differences of the two. As I started to speak on, we've become into the, we've gotten into this kind of cyclical problem where we, you know, maybe the second lowest bidder had three references that didn't say anything bad about them. The price was the lowest, and that's all we can base our decision on to have them come in. Well, what ends up happening is we show them the sites, we work with them, manage them. It takes a year and a half before we've determined that it's not just that they don't get the program, they just are not capable of performing or not interested in performing. By that time, our staff, I did a quick calculation at the request of Alderman Sanoyka, we estimate about two hours a week, Dwayne spends handling complaints from area businesses, residents, staff, elected officials, a lot of internal complaints, just because, you know, our guys take a lot of pride in their, in their sites. What we also have found out, I don't want to be upset with my city forester because it's his pride and his community. He will stop on his way into work, on his way in to the shop an hour early and pick all the weeds that the contractor forgot. And so in our research, we found that a lot of the area communities, most of the, admittedly, most of the communities we talked to were the larger communities, they break their landscaping contract in two. They have their high-quality contract where they do an RFP process, and then they have their low-end, kind of right-of-way maintenance, cut grass and leave contract where they bid that service out. We didn't propose that here because I just don't think we have enough to justify it. We're a little smaller, we have a lot of areas to cut, but it's a small community. And overall, I think the contract is under 50,000 or somewhere around that. It just doesn't justify splitting them in two. So, you know, so when you couple the staff time used to manage the contract along with our staff going out and correcting the problems they find, the cost we save versus had we been a little more selective in our contractor, I don't think warrants going with the low bid process. And I think the city attorney would, correct me if I'm wrong, when you take the bid process, you're really, unless I can find a problem with it, like a contractor that's had bad performance in the past, or we've had, you really got to go with that. I think you're opening yourself up to problems if you don't. And, you know, I have tons of other information here, but ultimately, I think you guys understand what I'm talking about with that process. The other part of my memo that I brought to you today is about the length of the contract. Currently, we do a three-year contract. After a year and a half, I've talked to, I actually had a long conversation with Alderman Sanoyka yesterday. When the, when staff finally figures out that it's a contractor, it's not worth the energy of getting out of the contract. Because then you get out of the contract, you have to pull the bond to hire somebody else to do the work while you rebid it. By the time you've rebid it, the three years is up on the contract and you're rebidding it again. It's just not worth the energy. So the other thing we're asking is to consider a, it's not necessarily a five-year contract, it's still a three-year contract, but it offers two one-year renewals. What that does is we'll receive pricing for five years. If the City Council, we will bring the contract to the City Council at the beginning of the year, every year. And if the City Council is in favor, if we don't experience any problems, the price is in line with what our expectation is, then you have the authority to renew it for up to two years. I think that gives us some great latitude. I also think it will encourage contractors, the contractors that we want to see, to be a little more sharp with their pencils and put a little more work into giving us good pricing. So I'm not going to take any more of your time. I think you understand through the memo and through this brief conversation, the issue at hand. And I'm just interested in hearing your thoughts on the matter. Mayor, we have three questions at the end. Just let me know if you need anything regarding that.
Yeah, no, thank you. I'd actually prefer you stay up here while we run through those areas that were feedbacks requested. Quick question regarding the first point, which is where council being asked about their level of support for securing proposals from qualified contractors in lieu of formal bids to select the contract and perform landscaping services. Is that putting the city at any risk in any capacity by, by not honoring a bid process anymore? Is there any risk to the city for that, Attorney?
No, the city has the legal authority to be able to acquire work through a bidding or a proposal process. And as a home rural community, you, you aren't even required to get proposals. You can bring something for approval by the council. But deviating from a bidding process to an RFP process has no legal negative implications.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that that's out of the way before we go down this road. But what are thoughts, any thoughts from the council on this question? Alderman Budmans, do you?
I knew I was going to get one from you. That's okay.
I just can't help myself.
No, that's okay.
You said something about, like, it takes about a year and a half and then we find out. So why aren't we doing a two-year initial contract so that if we find out within a year and a half, six months later, we're looking for somebody and we can do two-year renewals?
And, and so, you know, and I think the council can consider, you know, contract years any way you want. The issue with the two-year contract is if we find out after two years, we're rebidding it every two years. And with a shorter contract comes higher prices generally. So if I only get you for a year or two years, you know, it's not, I don't want to say it's not worth. We're still going to get competitive bidding, but I don't think we're going to lose the problems. That, that's the issue.
Right, but if you're, if you're bidding it for two with two-year renewals, then you're bidding, let's say, for example, a four-year contract. I mean, as long as they're pulling their weight.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, certainly that's something that could be looked at. I think it's just a, looking at it from a different angle. I, I'm just going with industry standards. Generally, people go with one, three, and five-year contracts. So I don't know what the deal is with the odd years, but I think that's just what it is. And, and the one benefit I think that I would see from staff's perspective is mentality-wise, even though it's three years plus two one-years, we see it as five years. So if we saw after a year and a half that the contractor was dropping the ball, we'd get out of it, we would recommend the council, that they void the contract. We pull their, their bond, hire a contractor that we can count on and secure additional proposals because then you have the entire extent of the remaining contract to award to the new contractor, and it's worth it financially. What we're really, I mean, the conversation I had with Alderman Sanoyka, you know, another big part of this is our staff's time. I mean, you know, the person, we have the person who's managing the contract now is doing two and a half jobs than were done five years ago. So that the person, we had the person managing this contract that was doing half of the work that our current man, personnel in the internal services position is doing. So his time is very valuable to the entire department. So his constant interruption from our projects, one of the major ones he's working on is our work order program. And he's our liaison for the entire, you know, when we were talking about asset management, it's the other half of that component. It just hasn't been able to get off the ground. And, and that's one of the reasons, is it's constantly being pulled out to go manage contracts. And, and this is one that just is very time-consuming. So I don't think our staff has an opinion strong one way or the other as to the terms. I think we just want to lengthen it and we want, it's not so much about being able to get out of it. We have the tools to do that now. It's more to lengthen it long enough to make it worth the contractor's time to do a high-quality job from day one. And that's kind of the balance between the lengthened contract versus, and the RFP process. Because us as a staff, we know, and we can do some research to see if a contractor has the chops to do what we're looking for him to do. So I, I, you know, I don't disagree, but I, you know, I don't know which way to go on that, so.
And then with your RFQ process, based on the size of the contract, does that, is there any way that you tie your RFQ, the number of, minimum number of quotations received to the value of the contract? So for example, if you're doing a $500,000 project, I would hope that you get more than two bids. You know what I'm saying? That, so that commensurate with the size of the, of the award would be the number of bids received?
Our staff knows that, you know, we know that the threshold for bid, bidding in the city is 20,000. We also know that there are some tasks that are over 20,000 that are too, are too laborious to try and create bid documents for. Our staff knows that there, for any fairly competitive business, HVAC installations, we're seeking out five or six contractors to get us proposals. Now, they don't always provide them, some people are too busy or whatever the case is. But we want as competitive a process as possible. I assure you, our guys love to get a great deal for the city. So we're interested, a thing like landscaping, I would expect to get 10 proposals minimum, minimum 10 proposals. Our, our goal here is not to reduce the competitive balance for this, this service. It's really to get the right people in the job, doing the job for us. That's where we're at.
So with this, thank you, Alderman Budmans. With this, where Public Works would be able to go out and secure the proposals from a given vendor rather than asking for vendors to provide the proposals and the scope of work and cost translated to perform that work. In exchange for that, what will Public Works and residents recognize from that? Will Public Works recognize efficiencies? Will we as residents recognize greater beautification in the community? Or what, what do we see as a result of this?
That would be the first thing, Mayor. I would expect the image of our, we call them our high-visibility sites, to go up dramatically. Specifically, City Hall, our fire departments, our Gateway Park, those kind of high-profile areas, Rotary Park, where we just have seen a real decline in what they look like. And if, I can guarantee you, if you haven't seen a decline, it's because of our Public Works staff. So what we're going to gain is, I, I'm just going, I mean, you know, being a resident, we have some of the most dedicated Public Works people. They grew up here, they live here, their families are here. These guys, if they see weeds in a bed, they're driving by, pulling their truck over and pulling those weeds. And so you might not see the problem, but our manpower is seeing the problem because we're compensating or, or really compensating for their failure to uphold their end of the contract by performing the labor ourselves. And, and we want to be in a position where our, our staff looks out and goes, yeah, it looks good, and walks, gets back in the truck and leaves. So that, along with the fact that Dwayne, which you guys all know is our vehicle services, internal services supervisor, he has great value to the entire department. He really helps with a lot of administrative things that we just don't have personnel for. And any minute I can get him back is a bonus to the entire department. So I think the city sees it in a secondary way, a peripheral way, in that we get our, our staff back doing the stuff we want them to do and not chasing problems.
Okay, and then second question to that, I don't know if it's even possible or advantageous, but you, you said that you noticed a trend that within the first year and a half of having a contractor out in their three-year term or five-year term or what have you, you, you can identify the level of quality that they're providing to the city. Is there the possibility, or is it advantageous for us to put in our contract that there is an 18-month quality review in that first three-year term? So that way, it gives the city the opportunity to discuss whatever observations we're noticing, any shortcomings or any gaps, and bring up the fact that your staff are pulling extra weight as a result of them not doing a full job or what have you? Can we do that?
First of all, I can tell you, we are going to tighten up our contract language with our expectations, for sure. So that's not a problem. I will tell you, we do those the first time. We do monthly meetings with the contractor to make sure he's on board. The problem is you, you get to that kind of sense of, false sense of security where you think everything's set, and then all of a sudden, the phone starts ringing. And all of a sudden, you know, the city manager's office is saying, what's going on? Why are there like 1,000 weeds and, you know? And the next thing you know, it's constantly putting out fires. So, and again, I'm not saying that happens all the time. I've been here six years and I've noticed it twice, and we bid it twice. So, and it has been an issue in my previous employ. There's some very high-profile sites that we had to do there. And the, you know, and I'm, I'm just saying what my history is. The council at that point made a decision to actually pay more money to get the guy they wanted to come in. Now, my, my goal is to not pay more money and still get the guy we want to come in, so. That, that's just, I think it's just the nature of the beast with this type of, that's why I limited it to the types of services that are really problematic.
Sure. Sure.
This is not going to be a commonality in Public Works. We want to bid our work out.
Yeah, and with that, I mean, if these behaviors still persist, and, you know, we're trying with the best intentions to remedy this, but if they still persist, should Public Works be more decisive in being firm, and eject these contractual obligations that we've committed to?
Yeah, absolutely, Joe. It just, or, I'm sorry, Mayor, it just becomes a, too comfortable. It becomes a, it becomes a question of time and, you know, risk reward, right? You know, I can go through all these steps. There's a lot of steps that it takes to do that. Or do I just bite my lower lip, handle the problems, and get through to the next bidding process? And that's, and I will tell you, with a longer-term contract, that won't be the case. Our guys will see the value in, hey, I'm going to get three and a half more years out of this if we get rid of the guy now. They'll be more apt to be strict early, to know that they're out to get a good quality workmanship over the long haul. We're not afraid to do that process. It's not an issue, it's, we just have to balance, what's the benefit of it? Do I, do I just, you know, it's, there are certain contractors that sometimes get our rotary surfacing project, and it's $20,000 less than the next guy, and sometimes we just bite our lip and realize we're going to deal with problems. And Alderman Budmats' word, we had a contractor that had as much gravel in the dirt as dirt, and we just bit our lower lip and said, we're never using this contractor again. And sometimes that happens, and just with this type of service, it happens more often than not.
Sure. And so it's just a calculated risk in
Absolutely.
...the length of time that you allow the detriment to persist?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
Any other questions or comments before we take a quick straw poll? We're kind of short on council here, so it's not going to be
Sure. Hey, as long as I have four people, I'm happy.
Yeah. So how does the council feel in terms of support allowing Public Works to secure proposals versus the formal bid process? Those in favor, raise your hand?
Thank you.
Thank you. There's nobody here to oppose that, it was unanimous, from those on the dais. The next item we have is, the question being asked for feedback, is the council supportive of a three-year contract term with the option of two one-year renewals for satisfactory performance, which still affords the council the ability to extend or discontinue services prior to the specific renewal year? Alderman Budmats, you had brought up a quick conversation about how we slice and dice these contracts. Are there any thoughts, comments, questions regarding the terms that the Public Works has specified in here? Alderman O'Brien?
I would just confirm, I like your idea, Mr. Mayor, is, and it sounds like Director Horn's for it, is that we get that 18-month, that review period in there, and it sounds like we want to do that. Any ways with tightening up, but I like your idea of that, if that needs to be worked into what you're looking for the vote on for two?
Yeah, I would like to see that in there. Of course, this is COW, so it's just for concepts, but
Oh, yeah.
If that's the trend you're noticing, that within about a year and a half, you guys are really starting to feel those pain points of a poor-quality contractor, then we should definitely try and put some mechanism in at that point in time, so we can call it when it's necessary.
We certainly will work with the city attorney to do that, and I didn't say it early, and again, I'm not opposed to Alderman Budmats' solution. Most of our contracts are three-year. It just helps us in managing those, to know when things are coming up. That's one of the reasons, I didn't state that earlier, that's my bad, so.
Okay. So those in favor of supporting the three-year, oh, Alderman Budmats?
Is there a possibility
Microphone, please.
Is there a possibility you could put a penalty clause in, if you're not reading the, if you're not making equality thing, eighteen months, you know, we're going to reduce the contract amount by 10%, whatever?
As soon as the mayor, actually, when Alderman O'Brien brought it up, and the mayor was saying, you know, talking about, I'm thinking, yeah, we need to put a penalty in there. So, again, something we'll work with the city attorney on, I certainly think we can do something like that, you know, and I don't want to take anything away from Dwayne, he does work really hard to try and let these guys be successful. You know, we want them to be successful, where there's this understanding of a significant learning curve. They've never been to our town, they don't know where we cut. There are some areas where we're cutting in someone's backyard, like literally in their backyard, we're cutting grass, because it was land that was, made an easement, and for some reason, let to be turf, and so now, everybody in the neighborhood expects the city to go cut it. So, and we're trying to rectify those problems as well, but there's just a learning curve, so it almost takes a whole season just from learning. That's what the next half-year is like. It's not learning. It's just that they are not a quality contractor. So I agree with you absolutely, Alderman Budmats, I definitely want to put some sort of penalty clause in there for that.
Good, thanks. Any other questions, comments? All right, so then, let's just get a quick show of hands at those in favor of these terms, the three-year and repeating one year thereafter, with the quality control mechanisms in place. Those in favor?
Thank you.
It's unanimous again. And then the third one, conceptually, is the council generally supportive of this method of securing pricing for contracts that experience similar issues? There are not significant number of contracts that experience these issues, the contracts that might be considered include janitorial services and tree maintenance services. For this one, I would just recommend, let's take a phased approach, and let's see how this works, and if landscaping services seems to be your biggest problem child, let's use this as the litmus test, and then bring this back before the council. Of course, council can weigh in on that, that's just my perspective on it.
My only thing on this, and I probably should have made it more clear, you know, the tree maintenance issue is more related to the term than it is the bidding process. We generally, with the tree trimming, we can put prequalification items in there about having arborists on staff and things like that, so that's not generally as big a concern. The janitorial one is very much like the landscape, the landscaping, we, you know, level of service is huge, and that serves every, you know, all of our staffs. The issue with that was just that, and I agree with you, this is not, like, we're just, I just want to know if I can bring it, if I bring it to the city council for, as a method in which we did it, is the council okay receiving it? I'm not saying you have to approve it at that time, but I don't, I don't want to, I'm asking, is the council going to want me to do another COW presentation to talk about this same issue if we decide to do it for janitorial, or, that's where I'm getting to, really? I'm trying to save myself a presentation.
Yeah, and I understand that. I think if we could then specify in the future that the tree service is more about the duration of contractual obligations, and then circling back to quality in the janitorial, of course, we can give you a barometer
Sure.
...of what we believe, but I do think that we should test this, and see what kind of value we get out of it. Otherwise, maybe there's potential for an entirely different direction if this component didn't work.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
But at this time, those in the council who are in favor of pursuing these other items, these categories, for Public Works, they have the knowledge that they can explore these. Those in favor of allowing Public Works to explore them, show your hand. That's one, two, three, and those opposed? One. So you still have your majority, but
That's okay.
I would urge you to take caution.
And I know where you're coming from. Yeah, sure, I totally respect that, and we can certainly work within those parameters.
Wonderful.
Thank you, everyone.
Well, that concludes the four items on this evening's agenda. Are there any other questions or comments from the council on these items? If not, then I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Thank you Alderman Budmats, thank you Alderman McHale for the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This meeting is adjourned. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.